All right. Hello, everybody, and welcome to Schnepp's Media's City Council District 13 Debate for the June 27th Democratic Primary. I'm Robbie Sequara, Senior Staff Writer for The Bronx Times. All 51 city council seats are up for grabs this year, just two years after the previous election cycle due to last year's redistricting. Tonight, candidates seeking the Democratic nomination in City Council District 13 will debate. This district covers the East Bronx neighborhoods, including Throdsneck, Pelham Bay, Van Ness, City Island, and Morris Park. The area's current council member is Marjorie Velazquez, who won the seat in 2021 after her predecessor Mark Jonai was term limited out of office. Challenging Ms. Velazquez are Irene Estrada, former female district leader for the 80th Assembly District, Bernadette Ferrara, Community Board 11 Chair, and John Perez, retired Army Officer. I will be serving as the moderator of tonight's debate, but also joining us this evening is someone who knows more politics than I do, Ethan Stark Miller, who is a senior political reporter for AM New York and Politics NY. He'll be serving as tonight's timekeeper. Care to explain the ground rules for our participants, Ethan?
Yes, I'd be happy to, Robbie. So for tonight's debate and all of our debates, we have two rounds of questions. The first round includes questions that we prepared, but you, the viewers, get to play a role in the second round. If you have a question you want to ask the candidates, feel free to submit them using the Q and A feature at the bottom of your screen. Just click on the Q and A button. We will screen the questions we receive, and if they're appropriate, we'll put them to the candidates. So let's go to opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement. And we'll start with Mrs. Estrada.
My opening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, good. Good evening, candidates. Good evening, and thank you for having us. My opening statement is that my name is Irene Estrada. I'm a former member of Community Board 11. I'm on the council 30th of the 49th meeting. I have two daughters who are police officers. One's a sergeant, the other one is a detective. I have four grandchildren. One graduated from AYU. The other one from Mount Vincent, and the other one is nine and the other one is seven, so they're just beginning. It is my joy in being here on this platform with all of you because we're all fighting for the same district. We're fighting to better, improve, protect, and thrive in the process of democracy. So I'm standing here as a candidate for City Council 13 to allow the voters to decide who would they like to vote for. But I'm here on my platform to say, vote for me, as Mrs. Estrada has been serving you for 42 years in my district faithfully in every aspect from sports, from coaching baseball, to running the 49th Placidic School Program, American Red Cross worker at Ground Zero, from Hurricane Katrina to Hurricane Sandy. I have been on the forefront of COVID from having funerals on Zoom as a clergy. And you know, the list goes on, but I'm running for office because we deserve better in our district and we deserve a process that is full of democracy for each and every individual that lives in our district. And that's why I'm running for City Council.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ferrera, you're next.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. This is a wonderful, this is a wonderful debate. Very, very happy to be here. My name is Bernadette Ferrara. I am a middle-class candidate from a family of Italian immigrants and a single mom with deep roots in my Bronx community. My family has lived in Van Ness for more than 100 years. They were at the groundbreaking of St. Dominic's Church in 1926. Families like ours stayed in the Bronx during the bad old years and rebuilt our communities from the ashes. My 40-year working career as an independent contractor in Manhattan was as a computer graphic designer. My volunteer community service started in the early 2000s as a certified trapped new-to-return TNR animal rescuer in the Bronx. I am the Chair of Bronx Community Board 11 and President of the Van Ness Neighborhood Alliance. I have been doing the constituent services work of City Council member for 14 years. I also sit on the board of the Morris Park Business Improvement District. I am not going to let a weak and woke progressive like Marjorie Velazquez destroy a lifetime of work by stuffing the East Bronx with high-density, low-income housing and so-called safe spaces where addicts can shoot up drugs. I am a different kind of Democrat, and I believe that an elected official should represent the community and not a personal or political agenda that destabilizes our communities and makes them more dangerous to live in. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Which camera am I looking at here? Do you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Hi, I'm John Perez. I am a, I'm running for City Council to be your representative in the City Council. I am a retired senior officer with the United States Army, and I'm also a single dad raising a young daughter here in our district. My experience in government is long-stretched. I have worked over 20 years with the United States Army, and I have acquired a set of skills and experiences that are necessary in order for you to govern effectively. I don't want to go into a lot of drawn-out explanations, but I am here. I'm ready to answer your questions. I may be brutal, but I will be honest. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Velazquez.
Hi, and good evening, everyone. Thank you, Schnepp's Media and Politics NY for this opportunity to discuss and debate, and I look forward to engaging the community even further than we have. I am Councilwoman Marjorie Velazquez, and I have been representing this district as a council member since January of last year. I have brought on to the table and prioritized public safety, quality of life, education, and most importantly, honoring the lives of our seniors and our vets. And I look forward to continuing funding and having legislation to better the lives of all in our district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and I should also mention that we went in alphabetical order, so that's, yeah. Okay, and then, so now we'll move on to the first round of questions, which Robbie will ask the candidates. In this round, each candidate will have two minutes for their answer, and their opponents will each have time to rebut rebuttals to direct questions. So for a specific candidate, our one minute while rebuttals to questions for all the candidates. So everyone's answer are two minutes. I'll be keeping track of time for the candidates as we go along, and candidates will be alerted when their time has expired, and they'll be muted if they go over time once we've alerted them. We'll maintain the alphabetical order, so the first question will start with Ms. Ferrera, then we'll go to Mr. Perez, Councilmember Velazquez, and conclude with Mrs. Estrada. All right, Robbie, take it away.
All righty. The Just Home Proposal at Jacoby Hospital has stirred quite a bit of controversy in this district. As you know, this proposal would offer affordable leases and supportive services to formerly incarcerated individuals released from Rikers Island with complex medical issues. They would be housed in a currently vacant building on Jacoby's grounds in residential Indian Village neighborhood in Morris Park. Ms. Ferrera, since you are first, you have publicly expressed your opposition to this project. Would you like to explain why?
Yes, I would. Um, this particular project, the one thing that is very important to be specific about is that everybody deserves a roof over their head. Everybody deserves to have services. And nobody in the community is, will deny that. But what the community is prioritizing are the needs that they have been requesting for years, for decades. And that's the one thing that seems to be not in the forefront. And instead of saying, well, you know what, what does the community want? What does the community want? There was never that interaction. It just basically was, well, this is what we're going to be offering the community through health and hospitals. That's where a lot of the pushback is. So our community has needed a community center for, I would say, since I was, since I was a kid growing up in Van Ness. So we're going back many decades. We, Morris Park, Van Ness, Pelham Parkway, we don't have a community center. So our children have to sort of rely on volunteer work programs that are not plentiful and that are not accessible. They're just not there. And I, you know, I, you know, my son says something to me that broke my heart, but he was right. He says, you know, Ma, he goes, I don't want to have a family grow up here in Van Ness. He says, there's nothing for the kids. And I just, it broke my heart, but he spoke the truth. And one of the things is we need to pour into our children, our future, our education. And the elected officials that are here now, they are not doing it. They haven't done it. They're not doing it. And it needs to take somebody like me that focuses on it to say, it's time for a change. It's time to do this, and we need to do it yesterday. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Perez?
Yes, sir. It seems like we're always focusing on the maintenance of something. It's always about creating solutions to existing problems or not creating solutions, but to supporting existing problems instead of creating solutions for them. If we focus on also balancing out the the prevention of you becoming homeless, the prevention of you becoming incarcerated, the prevention of you not having the proper training, not having the proper education. We seem to lack in that, and we're always supporting a crisis rather than addressing the prevention of a potential crisis down the road. If we focus on education and we bring those proper educations in, if we bring in the trade schools, if we bring in the mentors, if we bring in the people that are going to do peer-to-peer counseling and address these situations, the probability of somebody becoming incarcerated or homeless decreases exponentially, and that's what we need to focus on. So I do, I am opposed to the Just Homes Project in the Jacoby area. I'm pretty sure that we can possibly utilize the industrial area that's underutilized to put something together that doesn't become such a problem for the, for the area. But definitely focus more, more on the prevention of this happening down the line.
All right, Councilwoman, your response?
So this was something that came up in the prior administration, both under de Blasio and former council member Jonai. And so the frustration from the community has been the lack of engagement prior to it being just presented. And so I understand that, and so what we have been doing is meeting up with community leaders, seeing what is possible. When I went and opposed it, I was very public. And before even becoming a council member, I've always advocated for a women's health center. This is a hospital that we have here. This is an underutilized building, and certainly the Bronx needs a women's health center, period. We really need to look at the high rates of maternal mortality, especially within the Black and Brown communities. And this is a focus of my record, and certainly this is an area where we can focus on. However, it also means sitting down with the community leaders, listening to them and listening to their ideas as to what the future may hold. And then bringing it back to the administration, which is what we have been effectively doing throughout this time.
And finally, Mrs. Estrada.
As mothers of, as the President of Mothers Against 1900, which is the Jacoby Building, we have formed all the mothers in the district to fight against this because it's too close to five schools. In the beginning, when we pushed over 11, oh, close to 1,100 people coming to a town hall meeting to express their frustrations of not being told by Community Board 11 and other organizations that this was coming to the community. When I addressed Community Board 11 and the other organizations and went to the board and asked them, if you don't tell Ethan Phillips this is coming to our district, I will. So we went ahead and plastered the whole district with flyers, knocked on doors, and brought everybody in to discuss that this was going to happen. I did call Ms., our city councilman at this time, Marjorie Velazquez, and many times, the answer is, we're not getting a specific clarification of what's going on in this particular, in this particular project. You have Jacoby Hospital, you have HCC, then you have Fortune Society, who is funded by the celebrities. We protested at the gala that they had in Gotham Hall in New York City, and we protested there against the Mothers Against 1900 protestant because we don't want it there. Regardless of what they decide to put there, the decision in any, any community, community is what does the community want? Not what the community leaders, organizations, or what the city council want. It is what does the community want, and will it thrive and process good things for our community? It's not a safety structure for our community, for the seniors, for the elders, for the veterans. We're all in, even Palom Gardens, Allerton, Venice, Morris Park, the whole district is in, is in anger because we were never told about this. Now that we are working in the process of making sure that it doesn't happen, I did speak to Salamanka, who is a land use chair of City Council, and he said this was going to be tabled until after the election only because it's going to affect these, this particular primary, and that's why I'm running as well. Thank you.
All right, second question. Mayor Adams has made a focus of his administration to increase the housing stock throughout New York City. Knowing that this is the initiative of the mayor, are you supportive of bringing additional multifamily housing to Council District 13? We're going to start with Mr. Perez.
I do agree. Housing is a necessity. And I'm for it. There is nothing that, that's going to stand between me and preventing somebody from becoming, getting a home. But what I do question is the high-rise and the high-density buildings that may bring in an abundant amount of people that our infrastructure may not be able to handle. And also that if it does come in, we want to be able to sit down and discuss how it's going to be developed and to put crucial components in place that are going to assist the, that facility to operate and function properly, not to overburden the sewer systems, not to overburden our police departments or fire department. I mean, certainly, development is a question in our district right now with the development over by the Food Town, by the Buckner area. I know that's probably another question that you're going to be asking, but that was the centerpiece of discussion throughout this year. So I say, you have to be very, you have to be very proactive when you bring in development into the community, and you have to make sure that the structure will support that type of development.
Councilwoman, your chance.
I certainly agree. We're in the middle of a housing crisis. However, when we're talking about developing within our community, it's making sure that the jobs and the housing are our priority first. Our members of our community get to keep the jobs. Our members of our community get to keep those homes. It is for us, by us. It is something that I've advocated since the beginning, and it's certainly working with the administration to address the many infrastructure needs that our community needs because we can do both things, right? We can ask for additional infrastructure needs, right, and addressing those. At the same time, developing for our seniors, developing for our veterans, who are the most vulnerable populations within our district, and making sure that they are our priority. And that's what I continue to fight to do, as well as looking at other areas as keeping our families here, right? The most beautiful thing is we can say that we can continue living here, making homes for our young families to come and benefit, just like I did for my family when my dad first got here from Puerto Rico in the 70s. And I get to represent the same district that he first came here. That's what's huge, and if I can do that for my future generation, that's what we're striving for, making sure that everyone has a home.
Mrs. Estrada.
Can you please repeat the question?
Yes, I can. Mayor Adams has made a focus of his administration to increase the housing stock throughout New York City. Knowing that this is his initiative, would you be supportive of bringing additional multifamily housing to Council District 13?
I think it is a blessing when we talk about development for affordable housing and housing for the seniors, especially, and for the veterans. We must take care of those who are in our community first. You might hear my grandson in the back saying, "Call duty." But when we're talking about the housing crisis, what it, what kind of affects me the most as an advocate for 42 years in the Bronx, and it's not about where you came from and where you didn't come from, it's what you're doing now. Our city council continues to throw a lot of bull at us, and I have to confront this for one reason. When you take a look at senior housing, 2700 Randall Avenue, and my seniors haven't had heat for three years. Your city councilman for two, for two years, almost two years, and they still don't have no heat. I visit them. They have mold-infested, rat-infested buildings, and my concern is we're so concerned about building more, building more, building more. My thing is, let's get those seniors out of those buildings, put them into the new buildings, and tear down those old buildings and build up as high as you want. For that issue, for that particular site, I wouldn't have a problem if you built 20 stories, 40 stories, but get my seniors out of those nasty infested buildings so that they can thrive. They're senior citizens who have been teachers, worked for MTA, they were drivers, they were whatever they might be. They do, these are their golden years. So my thing is, as, working for how, developing housing, absolutely. But we have a building that's going up on Boston Road, and Allison, 10 stories, 333 units. But you got to make $83,000 to get in. That's not affordable for my residents. And if you want to put my residents into those particular buildings, then you're going, I guess you're going to have more Section 8 or more vouchers or make it available for them to come in. But again, we have to take care of those who are the, who are the least, who need us the most, and that's our seniors and our veterans. Because if we don't take care of them, we can't take care of the future. Thank you.
And Ms. Ferrera.
Thank you. Marjorie Velazquez said she is looking for every opportunity to build high-density, low-income housing projects in every part of District 13. And because of the Green New Deal nonsense that Velazquez supports, these high-density, low-income housing projects will not include onsite garages or parking lots. Where are all these thousands of new residents going to park? That's always an issue. And on the other hand, before we start, and it was just brought up, before we start building new, what about reducing respiratory illness among the low-income Bronx sites and fix the deplorable conditions in the NYCHA buildings? And make sure there's no lead paint, and the NYCHA apartments are clean, no black mold. Why are we focusing on that, and why aren't we, why aren't we fixing what we have and then focusing on having other buildings? Okay, that's one thing. But the one, the one point I do want to make is I believe in democracy and diversity. Democracy is allowing people to choose for themselves what kind of neighborhood they want to live in. And then having a diversity of neighborhoods gives you the choice of living in a high-rise building or a bungalow. It's balance. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, the third question. Councilmember, in October 2022, you reversed your stance at the 11th hour and voted to approve a controversial rezoning of Buckner Boulevard. The plan currently tied up in litigation is slated to bring 348 units of housing across four sites to Throdsneck, and was previously designated as low-density growth management area. Prior to your vote and dating back as far as 2021, you repeatedly told the community you were against the project. And since your vote, you've said publicly that you had received more calls in support of the project than against it. In your words, would you like to explain your pivotal vote? And do you have anything to say to those who feel betrayed by that decision?
I kept on talking to folks. My priority has always been, what's the plan, what's the plan, what's the plan? And the plan that was finally agreed upon is something that the community had asked for, and it was listening to the countless calls from our seniors asking for housing. And like, you know, my opponent Irene stated, it is true. It is a priority to make sure that we're creating housing for seniors, and it's specifically in that area. So thank you, Irene, for further proving the fact that we do need quality housing for our seniors, and that's what this allows to happen. We're talking about 100 units for our seniors with wraparound services. So that is what we're effectively looking forward to. Additionally, we're providing 25 units to our veterans and their families. And we also have a housing ownership, affordable ownership opportunity for our families that want to build up on generational wealth. That's what we're doing. It is that we can do the tough things. It is walking through the NYCHA buildings with the COO of NYCHA and making sure that they see for themselves what we do see, what our seniors experience, and making sure that we are delivering for our seniors firsthand. So we have provided that. And NYCHA is something that's under the federal government, so it is working with our federal partners like Richie Torres, who knows firsthand what it is to live in NYCHA, and it is working to deliver back into not only New York City, but specifically our district, what they deserve. And it is signing on to a lead abatement bill, so it's more than just funding. It is working with our partners in state and federal government, and it is also funding. So we are on top of that, and we are working with funding not only Throdsneck Houses, Palom Parkway Houses, Middletown Senior Center, and also Boston Road. It is making sure that we are looking at all our buildings, working for our seniors, providing access to resources like an MTA mobile unit that shows up to Middletown every single month. Because accessibility. Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mrs. Estrada.
Oh, sorry. Can you repeat the question, please? Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, can you please repeat the question?
Yes, I guess the question really is your reaction to the Buckner decision. And I guess, really, the question, I guess, to the rest of the candidates is how would you have handled that decision if you were in the council, councilmember's position?
If I were in her position at that particular time, I would have voted against it because the community didn't want it. When you, when I ran against Ms. Velazquez a year and a half ago, I told the people that if you voted for her, she was going to vote for them zoning, and she did. So when she told the community that she was not going to support it and then voted on it, she upset a whole district. But my concern is that not so much would they affect it, more about her voting for it. She didn't come up front with them and discuss that, you know, this is a decision she made, and why did she make the decision in that movement? My concern when it comes to this particular upzoning is that it's going to destroy the quality of life in all of City Island and all of our District 13 because of the low-density homes. Pelham Gardens, all of Throdsneck, Allerton Avenue, Van Ness, Morris Park, it's going to be all affected. Because you don't want to have somebody sell their house in the middle of the block, and then all of a sudden, it becomes a part of a developer, and they build up five stories with 100 units. Where are they going to park? Where are they going to go to school? The quality of life completely goes down the drain. And where, what about the shortage? When it rains, it floods in different areas of Pelham Gardens. So they're not thinking the consequence that it's having, having on us. We're burying, we're burying the weight of the issue of this upzoning. Now, I know that they're building 20-story buildings later on with the MTA, but when it comes to the upzoning with all these buildings being built, they're not taking it in consideration. How is it affecting the low-density quality of life of those generational homes who have four people, four generations living in the house? My son-in-law is Italian, Polish, and Irish. They've been living on Kingston Fort, what, what is it, from the great-great-grandmother's era. They have been rooted here. So when you start changing the overdevelopment, it's changing the whole livelihood style of Palom Gardens and Throdsneck. And it's not fair to the communities. It's not fair to the taxpayers.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Ferrera.
Well, I will tell you, I am 100% against upzoning. And I will say that the Buckner upzoning is one area. You have the upzoning proposals on the Metro North situation that goes for 46 blocks, and a good portion of those block of that percentage of those homes are in Community Board 11, not Community Board 9. Eastern Mount Avenue is a dividing line. We also have, on top of it, we have, of course, we just said about the Just Homes Project, okay, 1900 Seminole. We also have the issues on Boston Road, the Allerton Avenue. There are so many upzoning proposals that all of District 13, and I have to say, is definitely under attack. Our way of life is being attacked from every corner. And we, you know, we should be able to have a choice of where we live, like I said previously. But what I will say is that I don't, well, I can't say it on here, but anyway. I don't, well, I can't say it on here, but anyway, uh, it, it's just our neighborhoods having these upzoning proposals. Um, as far as, uh, what Marjorie Velazquez says about bringing the veterans, you know what? There could be an actual separate building that the veterans could have, not inside of the Bruckner upzoning. And from what I understand, there was a partnership. There had to be a partnership with the, with the veterans for them to get housed there, and the original partnership fell through. So now I think the Jeremiah Project is supposed to be part of that partnership. So these veterans are not gonna get that housing unless they have that partnership that is gonna pay for it. So it's really not going to be veteran housing. I mean, it's gonna, you know, you could say it, but I, I, you know, I, we're not gonna see it. And as far as seniors, seniors should have their separate housing. They should not be involved and be part of this huge three hundred and sixty-four, sixty-eight, uh, apartment unit. They should have their separate housing, just like the other seniors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to answer this question, because it's, it's, it's more, but it sounds more like it's more complaining and complaining and not coming up with real solutions. The, the, the issue that the community had with Marjorie Velazquez was that she wasn't forthright. She didn't come clean, she didn't, uh, state her intentions after the fact, and they were very upset about that. Uh, when she overturned her decision, I got it, I understand. You, as the commander in chief, you have to make the hard decisions. Sometimes you have to, you know, you have to make decisions that the community doesn't like. Uh, uh, but you have to make those decisions, but you have to justify those decisions as well. I was very opposed to that development only because it wasn't, um, it, it wasn't, uh, it, it it compromised the integrity of the community. And if you are gonna have to force yourself to make a decision like that, because people do need housing, veterans do need housing, seniors need housing, everybody needs housing, then you should have negotiated, you should have negotiated for, uh, the building not to be so high. But you could have also said, well, you know what, if I'm gonna have to swallow this pill, I'm gonna need a new fire station. I'm gonna need to move it from where it is, which is a one-way, and it has to do a wraparound in order to get out of there. I want a brand-new, uh, fire station, I want another ladder, because we're gonna have more people in here. So there's gonna be more, we're gonna need them more. I'm gonna need a bigger police department, I wanna move that from where it is. I want, uh, the Pelham Bay Park, I want the football field that is tearing apart, the sod is coming apart. I want a brand-new sod on there so that my kids can go and play football in the wintertime and in the summertime, and not have to trip over that. Um, I want, uh, uh, five miles of extra roads paved a year in addition to what naturally comes in. Um, these are the negotiations that you have to do when a development comes in. You have to make sure that you understand the bigger picture of the whole thing, and you, 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 you don't compromise uh, the integrity of the community.
That's time.
You actually put things together in place to make it work.
Thank you. All righty, uh, we're gonna move on to our, uh, our audience questions. Thank you so much for, the audience for submitting questions. Um, uh, this is, uh, in this round, we will consist questions that come from the chat. Uh, this time we will ask candidates to provide one minute responses to each question, and the other candidates will have a minute for rebuttals. Um, the order will be Ms. Estrada, uh, Ms. Ferrera, uh, Ms. Perez, and Councilwoman Velazquez. Um, so the question comes from anonymous attendee, I'm not sure if that's their government or not. But I would, they said, quote, "I would like to hear them speak about the Metro North buildings in the Morse Park, in the Morse Park community." And the candidate's thoughts on putting up buildings in this neighborhood. Um, I guess we can expand that to thoughts about building around the proposed Metro North stations.
I believe, I believe what happens with, with, uh, with this particular project is that it's gonna take a couple of more years before you start seeing it, um, bloom from Waters Place, Venice, Morris Park, and further up to Tree Month. Uh, the, they, they were planning to build twenty buildings, twenty-story high. And they're also, uh, uh, from my understanding, are building a mall and a metropolitan area in Waters Place. So when I speak to the people in the, in, in different areas, especially Brooklyn, they're like, wow, I'm, I'm moving to the Bronx. If, is the rent, the rent's gonna be cheaper there. So how is it going to affect Morris Park and, and our community? Is that you're gonna have more people from different areas coming in to, to join and live here in the Bronx? As I've seen here, as our door knocking has proven, that many people are moving here from Queens and from Brooklyn because they find that the rent here in the Bronx is cheaper. So it's going to affect the community because, yes, it's gonna be brand-new and wonderful. But to those who have been living here as quality of life and, and homeowners, and we're used to a certain way of lifestyle, it completely throws us off from our comfort zone.
Thank you. Right, Ms. Ferrara.
Thank you. I have been, been, been involved with city planning since two thousand and eleven, when there was an outreach to community leaders with regards to the idea of having a, uh, Metro North train stations. And of course, over the years, we had workshops, and, and there's been a lot of community engagement. But I will tell you, when there was the unveiling on December thirteenth and December fourteenth about what the surrounding areas were going to have. And up until that time, and, and trust me, I asked, I sent emails, I followed up because I needed to know when things were gonna be changing, because people were asking me, and I wanted to know. So I was not getting any of what I saw revealed. And what was revealed, uh, definitely took my breath away. Forty-six blocks of upzoning proposals, there's the scope of the work. Each one of the scope of the works has their, um, information, all this information is online. But, um, it was forty-six blocks, which means there's gonna be six thousand new apartments and eighteen thousand to twenty thousand new residents coming in with no amenities that were ever mentioned. No, we, we're gonna be a food desert, educational desert. Okay, I could go on.
Ms. Perez. Thank you.
I, I'm okay with the development coming up, um, that there's high-rises there already, um, it'll complement the area. Uh, you have transportation there that's gonna move people to and from Manhattan downtown, uh, back and forth. Uh, certainly, it's probably gonna attract a higher, uh, value, uh, uh, residents uh, there. And what we, I mean, let's face it, we wanna create a community that cares about their community, that is willing to build schools, that is willing to build, uh, uh, is willing to grow along with it. Uh, but if we don't start building, then people won't come. Uh, and we wanna increase, uh, our population, because it'll increase our ability, uh, to elect uh, new people, more people, uh, it'll bring people in. Um, and, and it's diverse, it's even more diverse. You, you're gonna have people from all over the place. Listen, I was in the army for eighteen years, I dealt with people from all over this country. And they're diverse, and they have different, uh, upbringings, they have different mentalities and understanding. But, um, they generally wanna live well, and if that's the Bronx, then I will welcome them in.
Thank you. And finally, council member.
I mean, look, this district has been transit-starved for so long. This is an opportunity for our families to finally get into the city in a fast, easy way. It is an opportunity for our families to find jobs, not only in the city, but to also have folks to come to our restaurants. Look at our district as the shining star that it really is to me. And so when we're talking about opportunities, it gives our small businesses a chance to even survive and thrive. And it really gives our families a chance to go into the city and come back, and that's what we're looking forward to. And when we're talking about specifically the Morse Park area, we're talking about the opportunity of creating a life science hub. We saw what it is in Manhattan, in the conversation that it has been, what about us? We've been in the backburner for so long as a Bronxites, right? We've been forgotten, out of borough, out of mind, but this is our chance. This is our opportunity to tell everybody else in the city, you know what, we are worthy to have a life science hub. We have hospitals already, we have Jacoby, we have Montefiore, and it's building up around that to make sure that we're supporting our families, our seniors, with the services that they deserve.
All right, thank you. You so much. Uh, the next, uh, question is, since Ms. Ferrara, uh, you are first, this question was directed to you by Michael Case, I'm so sorry if I butchered your name. Um, he wants to ask about a Facebook post that you commented in the wake of, uh, the Jordan Neely situation happened about a few months ago. Um, he, quote, this is from your Facebook, and please confirm if it is or not. Um, quote, "New Yorkers are fed up with out-of-control crime, and Daniel Penny, uh, who was indicted today in relation to Mr. Neely's death, did something about it. Now Penny, comma, and all New Yorkers who would think of fighting back are put on trial by radical left progressive prosecutors who see criminals as victims and victims as oppressors." Uh, in that lane, it seems like the, they want you to explain what that Facebook post is meant to mean. And I guess for the other candidates, where do you stand on the side of Mr. Neely's death?
Okay. Well, before we talk about Mr. Neely, let's talk about the bodega owner. The bodega owner that was actually self-defense, and he was being assaulted. And then he gets, he gets indicted for murder. He was in self-defense. This is the same church, different pew, okay? Here is somebody, uh, to be quite honest, I've been riding the subway since I'm seventeen. All of my clients are in Manhattan, I have been on the subway for over, you know, forty years. So I have been there as an adult and as a teenager. And let me tell you, if I was assaulted, and, and to be quite honest, I had been assaulted at one time. I wish that there was a Mr. Neely there. I was going to school, I was going to college at FIT. I was walking out of those turnstiles, and I got assaulted. I was trapped, there was nobody there to help me, and I was screaming. I was screaming and pushed myself out of there with portfolios in both hands. And let me tell you, I wish he was there to save me. And people, this will basically tell other people, you can't do it anymore.
All right, thank you. Mr. Perez.
Yeah, I mean, the loss of life, um, it's bad all the way around, doesn't matter, um, how you do it, uh, when you do it. Obviously, if your wife is in danger, or, or the life of anybody else, or themselves, uh, you can act upon that, and you won't be prosecuted for it. Um, I believe that, uh, Mr. Perry should have taken a little bit more care and concern on loosening up the restraint that he had on, on the, on the deceased. And the other individuals that were around him should have told him also to release at one point that you get, when you get to the point where he's not a threat anymore, or when the subject is not a threat anymore, you have to, um, you have to act upon that. Um, but we don't know what state of mind, uh, Marine was in. I mean, he could have went into combat mode at that particular moment. What I understand, Mr. Neely was, uh, was verbally threatening people, but didn't actually threaten anybody or attack anybody at that point. So we'll, we'll find out during the court.
Councilman.
What can be said, but it's a tragedy all around. Um, and what we saw today, we just have to make sure that it's laid out in the courts, right? At the end of the day, we know that there's a lot of mental health crisis here in the city, and that we're addressing it. And so in the city council, what we've been doing is making sure that we are having more healthcare workers out there, more mental healthcare workers. And specifically, working with the chair, Linda Lee, to address this issue and creating a pathway and a pipeline for more mental health providers, because that is also a need. And when we're talking about our communities feeling safe, it is working as a community and identifying stuff and making sure that we're working together as a community, because this is a tragedy all around, and this is tough. And as New Yorkers, we could do tough things, and we could have these tough conversations, and at the end of the day, um, mourn the loss of life.
And finally, Mrs. Strata.
First, I would like to say, um, I can go to his, to his family and to all the New Yorkers. This is a, a, a constant thing that's gonna continue to happen here in the city, where you have a lot of issues with mental health crisis. And a lot of issues on the trains and transportation, that we don't have no public safety. There is no public safety, we need more policing, we need more people out there to do their job. But because of certain laws, uh, they continue to come out, and it's a, a cycle that's going, going to continue to happen until laws are changed, amended, and until, uh, until then, you're gonna see people act on their own to protect themselves. I believe that, uh, in this case, um, regardless of what anyone says, it doesn't bring Mr. Jordan back, and it doesn't take the pain away from those who are mourning. But it can also bring the, the statement that it's always gonna fall into the court system. If we don't change the court system, uh, to have more provision for mental health crisis, it's going to continue to happen over and over again. Because you know what, this comes from the Vlazhovs administration, where his wife took, uh, over a billion dollars from Thrive. So go get that money back, and we go get the money back, we might be able to open up more centers. Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna try to squeeze in one more audience question, and then it'll be closing statements, so we're gonna be real tight.
I think we gotta close it up now.
Okay, all right, well, I'm so sorry for all the viewers that, as much as I didn't get to, that's my apologies. Um, closing statements, uh, we are now gonna move on to closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes to speak. Um, let's see, who was last? It was, Mrs. Strata was last, so let's see, it'll be Mrs. Strata giving the closing statement, okay. So, Mrs. Strata, you will start off with closing statements, you have two minutes to speak, um, the floor is yours.
My closing statement is that it's been the pleasure serving, uh, all of our Bronxites in our district for forty-two years. I love our district, I love City Island, I love Allerton, Venice, Throsnik, Morris Park, Pelham Gardens, and Pelham Parkway, we are the thriving place where everybody wants to come, and even the developers want to move. It is us that we should be able to make our own decisions where we live. I am a daughter of a Korean War veteran, I have two daughters on the force. I continue to fight for the blue and advocate for the blue, as I am wearing the, our police commissioner's scarf that she, she gave to me. Because we are a people that celebrate life. Regardless of who you are in the Bronx, we celebrate you. Regardless of your gender, regardless of your culture, I am Mexican-American. And my son-in-law is Italian, Polish, and Irish. Uh, my children are Puerto Rican and Mexican, I, my granddaughter just married African-American, uh, Cam. We have, uh, Chris Elise, who is Dominican. My family is from the United Nations, we have everybody and anybody, because you know what, the Bronx is a thriving melting pot. I am proud to be a New Yorker at Bronxite, and I am proud to be a candidate for city council. And I encourage you to vote for me, because you will not be ignored, and our issues will be taken care of. Thank you.
Ms. Ferrara, uh, it is your turn.
Thank you. I am a different kind of Democrat, old-school, community-oriented, and common sense. I believe an elected official should represent the community and not a political or personal agenda. Marjorie Velazquez has lost touch with our people, our communities, and common sense. She has voted one hundred percent of the time with the most radical members of the city council to pass community-killing policies and laws like upzoning to build high-density, low-income housing projects throughout District thirteen. Velazquez voted yes on a law that allows homeless people to live outdoors and just wait until the tent cities go up along Pella Parkway, Greenway, Van Collet Park, Bicentennial, Berry Point Park, Phanau Park, and the other playgrounds. Velazquez also supports creating so-called safe spaces in our neighborhoods for junkies to shoot up and the pop dispensaries, and drug rehab centers, or any guy. These shooting galleries will be located in your schools, uh, senior centers and houses of worship. She voted one hundred percent of the time with the radicals of our city council to pass neighborhood-destroying bills. She goes along to get along, I will be the voice of reason on the city council, and I will fight as hard as I can to defend our neighborhoods and our quality of life. I will stop upzoning, I will defend our neighborhoods, and I will take back our cities. Thank you.
Mr. Perez.
Hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, I have a problem with connectivity over here, I had to come back in. Well, let's face it, the elections are coming up pretty soon, um, they start on Saturday. Um, I'm not a person that's too much for words. I, I like actually creating things and putting things into perspective and, and, and putting them out. And pleading is not one of my best things, I don't like pleading. Listen, you have your choices out there, you know what one candidate, well, you know what all the candidates are all about, you know what Marjorie has done throughout her two-year tenure. Uh, and you know what everybody else is all about, I haven't heard anything yet about any high schools that are coming in. I proposed a military high school academy to bring into the, uh, to the district. Um, I'm working on bringing some trade schools into, to the district. Uh, it's all about building, and it's all about building those relationships, and about creating opportunities for other people. Uh, I do support strongly, uh, union, uh, unions are the backbone of, of the city of New York. Uh, and we wanna make sure that they're, uh, they're protected as well. Um, I really do not feel that this is the best time uh, to be a city council person. Uh, uh, but it is a necessary, uh, a job to be done, there are so many things that are gonna be popping up. There are so many things that are going to be popping up in the next couple of years, and you want to have somebody in there who's well-prepared, who's battle-tested, battle-approved, who's been in the hole, uh, and, and, and work through the, uh, work through the kinks and bring real solutions to these problems and not just start bickering and pointing fingers, is to create solutions to these problems. And we're going to be facing a lot of, a lot of them in the future. So if, if, if you like what I say, vote for John Perez. Thank you.
And council member, you get to bring us home.
Velazquez, uh, I'm used to being last because of it, but better last and showing the strength, right? I am Marjorie Velazquez. I am a proud Democrat for my whole life. I don't change parties just to run for office. I believe in my party and what it brings back. It is good union jobs. It is housing for us all. And more importantly, for the last year and a half, I've been working to deliver real results, over twenty million dollars in my first six months in office. And that's real resources for our communities when we're looking at our healthcare system, when we're looking at our schools, our transit systems. I've been delivering, and it's continued to deliver that for our communities, for our seniors, for our veterans, and certainly for our future, which is our children. And I look forward to earning every single vote out there starting this Saturday. So thank you for the opportunity, uh, to present to me. Looking forward to further conversation. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Councilwoman Velazquez, Mr. Perez, Mrs. Estrada, Ms. Ferrera. Thank you so much for engaging in this debate. That concludes our Democratic primary debate for the thirteenth City Council District. Remember that, as Councilwoman said, early voting in the primary begins on Saturday, June seventeenth, and primary day itself is Tuesday, June twenty-seventh. Visit the Board of Elections website at vote.nyc to find your early polling site and local polling place. Every election, large or small, is an important one, so please vote. Thank you for watching. Uh, I hope you tune in for the Republican debate that's happening in like ten minutes, uh, and please have a great.